To this meeting for Tuesday, October 17th. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the regard I have any wishes, to one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Grigsby, here.
Here.
This is Saxon.
Here.
This is Tamira.
Here.
Mr. Vakken.
Here. Finalization of the agenda. Is there anything to add or remove?
The agenda is finalized, presented.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the written summary of the regular minutes for the meetings on September 5th, 2023, and September 19th, 2023.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. Saxon. Roll call, please.
Ms. Tamira.
Yes.
Ms. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vakken.
Yes. Right into the Superintendent Treasures Report.
Excellent. Well, it is so good to see everybody back in person for the school year and looking to recognize some of our pretty amazing students here. And I would like to begin that presentation with Amanda Zapatakney, Principal of Liberty, who is going to introduce our students.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Mrs. Vance was not able to be here this evening, so I'll be recognizing our students from ECLC. And our first student of the month is Maeve Honey. Maeve, if you can come on up. Maeve is in pre-K. She's in Mrs. Barone's class. So Maeve was recognized as the student of the month for pre-K because she's always doing the right thing at the right time. She's helpful and kind to everyone. She tries her best and never, ever gives up. We are so proud of her and thankful to have her as a positive peer in your classroom. Way to go, Maeve. We're very proud of you. All right. And our kindergarten student of the month is Isaac Serrano. Isaac is in Mrs. Morris's kindergarten class. And Isaac was recognized for being student of the month because he is always Ranger Strong. He's a great role model for others in his class. He is attentive, does his best on every task that he's given, and strives to follow directions in the classroom and in the building. He is a pleasure to have in class, and we are very proud of Isaac. Way to go, buddy.
Maeve, with our certificates. Before we move on to our Liberty presentation, parents, if you don't mind hanging out, you're our staff member of the month. And then we'll take a group picture in the hallway of all of our amazing students and staff. If you can hang out for that, that would be great.
So for Liberty, for our students of the month, our first grade student of the month is Alice. And I know I saw her in the back. Alice is in first grade in Mr. Ditzler's class. And she said her favorite thing about Liberty is Mr. Ditzler because she loves playing games where she can have fun and learn at the same time. And when she grows up, she wants to be a vest, and she is especially interested in cats. So Alice was nominated by Mr. Ditzler for being a great example of what it means to be a Ranger Strong first grader. She works well on her own in the classroom, is always raising her hand in class, or is doing her best work by herself. She is a great team player. She helps students who need it whenever she can. She is a true ray of sunshine in the classroom, and her smile brightens our day. Way to go, Alice. We're really proud of you. And our second grade student of the month is Jeremiah Farinelli Martinez. Jeremiah is a second grader in Mrs. Lavalia's class. And today, he said his favorite thing about Liberty is that everyone is responsible for themselves. And when he grows up, he wants to be an FBI agent. So I know we have some great things to come from Jeremiah. And Mrs. Lavalia nominated Jeremiah because he is a perfect example of what it means to be Ranger Strong. He is constantly caught making excellent choices by other teachers in the building and the classroom. Jeremiah gets along well with his peers and is always willing to offer a helping hand. We are so lucky to have him in our class this year, and we are very proud of him. Keep up the great work, Jeremiah. You are wonderful. And I would like to invite us to Mr. Sullivan to present the students of the month from HR.
Good evening, and thank you for coming. Our first student of the month is a third grader, Ben Kohler. Ben was nominated by his classmates for being a role model for respect. Ben shows respect to his teachers, staff, and other students throughout his school day. He is polite. He helps others when he sees a need and always takes care of his learning environment. Keep up the Ranger Strong work, Ben. Great work again, sir. Our next student of the month is Brynlee Hanson. Brynlee is an amazing student. She is always looking for ways to help others, including her teachers. She shows kindness in every action. We are so excited to have Brynlee in our studio this year. Congratulations, Brynlee. We had two other students of the month who were unable to attend, so I will just read the descriptions for you. Our seventh grade student of the month is Braylon Mashkala. This year on the blue team, Braylon has demonstrated a respectful attitude in his work and in his classes. He works well with his peers and always has a positive outlook in whatever he is working on. We are super excited to have a student like him in our studio this year. James Chuliba, third grader. James is a great leader. He loves to help his friends and teachers whenever they need it and always has a smile on his face when doing so. They can always rely on him. Great job, James. I'd like to turn over to Ms. Durkin, Ranger High Tech Academy.
Good evening. Thank you for having us today. I have two learners of the month to present to you. Both of them have been nominated for their service to the school and to the other teachers and learners at our school. Our first learner was unable to make it tonight. She went home ill today. But Farah Heard. And Farah was nominated by her technology teacher, Coach Sebastian. And this is what Coach Sebastian had to say about Farah. Farah brings kindness and enthusiasm to our class sessions. She is willing to take academic risks when applying new skills. I have witnessed Farah complimenting her classmates on their good work as she seeks to find the positive in every interaction. At the end of each class session, Farah can be found helping to keep our learning space in order. She has returned forgotten water bottles, pushed in chairs, and helped return materials to their places before she leaves for recess. I'm so happy for the opportunity to help Farah master new skills and technology this year. And then our next learner of the month is Jack Albers. Jack was nominated by Coach Fawn. He actually put together a very special recognition this year. And this is what Coach Fawn has to say. Jack has done a great job this year showing appreciation to those in our schools. Jack was Ranger Strong by recognizing our school custodial staff for National Custodians Day. He spent time having the learners and coaches sign thank you cards and deliver gifts. He organized it all and made sure everything was together for Coach Esbert and Coach DiColo for all they needed at RHTA. Way to go, Jack. You're very much showing how Ranger Strong you are. Keep up the good work. And now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Mueller from high school.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's good to see everybody. Congratulations to all of our students of the month to this point. As high school principal, it is my privilege to always present students nominated at the end of their North Ridgeville City Schools career. And tonight, we have two outstanding members of the North Ridgeville Class of 2024 to present to the Board of Education, our audience, and the community. One, our first award winner or student of the month is Allison Guerrero. Allison could not be with us this evening. She had to make the hard choice to come to this event or to be with her Lady Ranger volleyball teammates as they begin play in the OHSAA sectional tournament at Brexville. Easy choice for her. I wish that she could be here because she is an exceptional student. We recognize Allison for her outstanding and well-rounded career in the North Ridgeville City Schools, but for a particular reason this evening. Allison is one of 72,000 high school seniors out of 1.5 million who took the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test last fall, in the fall of the junior year, to be recognized by the College Board. Her recognition comes for her achievement as a Hispanic, a student of Hispanic heritage, as she received the Hispanic College Board Recognition Award from the College Board. The National Recognition Program recognizes high-achieving students in underrepresented areas. Allison is also an outstanding example of Ranger Strong as a member of the varsity volleyball team. Her favorite subject being history. She loves to read. Her dream college is Berry College, where she hopes to eventually pursue a career as a veterinarian. She is outstanding in all regards. We wish her luck tonight, and we thank her for being an outstanding role model for all North Ridgeville City Schools students. Congratulations, Allison. Month is Anne Marie Mutombo, who is here with her family this evening. This is Anne Marie. Anne Marie, I will tell you, approaches her life with energy and passion and vigor and commitment. She does not take one untoward step in North Ridgeville High School. She is a young woman with a plan. Tonight, we're recognizing Anne Marie for that reason, as well as also being one of 72,000 out of 1.5 million high school seniors being recognized by the College Board and the National Merit Scholarship Corporation in recognition for her African-American College Board Award. This award, as I said about Allison, recognizes the strong academic achievement of students on the PSAT from underrepresented areas. It's more probably a benefit for those people looking to recruit such an outstanding young lady because Anne Marie took the test just as a matter of that life plan she is pursuing. She participates at North Ridgeville High School in our high school marching band where she plays the oboe. She has some of her bandmates here this evening. Wave, guys. Don't mess with the band, right? She also is a member of our National Honor Society, and she is helping us launch a Model UN program at North Ridgeville High School. Her favorite classes are AP Calculus AB, band, of course, and AP Physics. They're fun. Okay. In her free time, she can be found practicing the oboe and piano. Her dream college is Baldwin Wallace, where she would like to pursue web development and an opportunity for a professional musical career as an oboist. She is awesome. And Anne Marie, I want you to know, and your band members know this, we recognize everything you do and the leadership you provide to the rest of our Rangers at North Ridgeville High School. Congratulations.
Hey, congratulations to all of our students of the month. Again, parents, we have two short presentations. Our staff members of the month, we're going to hear from Ms. Durkin from RHTA, and then we'd love to be able to take a photo. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our Director of Human Resources, Amy House Settler, to introduce our two outstanding staff members of the month.
Congratulations to all of our award winners this evening. Anne Marie, great choice on Baldwin Wallace. Fine institution. On behalf of the Board of Education, it is my pleasure to congratulate two staff members for their selection as our October Staff Member of the Month. Each month, the Board of Education recognizes staff members who have shown extreme care, demonstrated excellence, and/or provided exemplary professionalism. These nominations may come from students, parents, colleagues, or administration. This month's first award winner is Ms. Jennifer Gongos. Jennifer is an attendance secretary at the high school. Ms. Gongos was first served as a substitute for the district in the 1819 school year and was hired full-time in August of 2019. Her experience as an office manager and her substitute experiences made her an outstanding addition to our staff. Jennifer was nominated by multiple colleagues this month. One had this to say about her. Jenny has put so much time and effort into the standard operating procedures of attendance at the high school. Her flexibility and kindness are unmatched. Jenny is always quick to give a smile or provide you with the information that you need. We are so thankful to have her. Jenny's administrator shared this. She is thorough, observant, diligent, and consistent in her performance. And she is a positive person who brings joy to NRHS every day. Congratulations, Jenny, and thank you for your service to our students, too. Our second employee this evening is Ms. Randy Muck. Randy is a Spanish teacher at Ranger High Tech Academy. Ms. Muck was first hired as a school counselor at the high school in 2005. In 2017, she became the Spanish teacher at Ranger High Tech. During her career, she has served as a mentor, National Honor Society advisor, project care facilitator, and department chairperson. Randy was also nominated this month by several of her peers. Comments regarding Randy include, Randy is an exceptional educator. She goes above and beyond in every way for kids at our school. It is only September, and she has already completed a PBO, Project-Based Learning Opportunity, with the boys soccer team, and is already working on another. She has also been a mentor for me as a younger teacher. Another teacher added, Coach Muck goes above and beyond to engage her students in learning. Every time I pick up my students from her Spanish class, they are learning through movement and language. I am always so impressed with her teaching style. Another colleague shared this. Randy's tireless enthusiasm for creating authentic learning experiences for children is a model for her colleagues. She consistently seeks partnerships within both our local and global community to craft meaningful experiences for our learners. Randy creates opportunities to allow her learners to learn more than the cultures and language of Spanish speakers. She consistently finds ways to incorporate service learning into our projects. Congratulations, Randy, and thank you for being a role model for both your colleagues and our students. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank all of our parents and staff who completed nominations this month. I would encourage you to continue to do so because I share those kind words with our staff, and it's so great to hear all of the great things that our staff is doing for our students. And it's a wonderful way to recognize their hard work. So congratulations again to Ms. Gongos and Ms. Muck.
Thank you, Ms. House Settler. These themes are always something that we and the board look forward to get a chance to learn a little bit more about some of our students, staff members. And tonight certainly was no disappointment, and we are so excited to have all of you. We are going to hear from Coach Durkin from Ranger High Tech Academy, who can tell us a little bit about what's going on at the only publicly accredited STEM school in Lurin County. We are excited to welcome her. Thank you, Ms. Durkin.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to come. I normally am in December, so I'm, you know, trying to, but I want to share at the beginning of the school year. Actually, it's almost the end of the first quarter, so we are getting there. Pull up our presentation. And then, do you all get copies of the presentation, or do I need to share with you?
You can send it to us.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I added some fun pictures and captions and things that's going on, but I'm not going to spend time necessarily going over all of that today. I want to focus on the big picture of how things are going and what's happening over at RHTA. So as we're looking at our academics, we are doing a great job getting right back to where we were pre-COVID and getting the kids up to those high academic, high achievements, which we're very excited about. And I know that Dr. Miller went over the whole district picture for you previously. Based on our feedback from the Ohio STEM Learning Network, along with our school data and then feedback from our teachers on where they are in their teacher-based teams, we came up with three goals that we're really focusing on this year. One of them is improving those dynamic assessment practices, which means the ways to assess kids that are not paper, pencil, tests, quizzes. So we're working on furthering those practices. Another one is looking at the data that we have from the state and from our assessments to analyze our project-based learning units to see if there's any gaps or if we need to change the scope and sequence, what we need to do to make sure that we're really hitting all of the standards in a very thorough manner. And then creating a system for getting all of those resources and all of those great things that we're doing so that we can share that and so that if there are changes in staff or position, that we don't have to start over. They don't have to start from scratch. They have those resources compiled somewhere for them. We did get our bronze award for our PBIS, which we are very excited about. Our early literacy, we're very excited about that as well. We have over 94% of our learners in grades two through three are at or above benchmark on those testing that we did at the beginning of the year. And then last year, we had over 50% of our middle schoolers earn high school credit. So we're really working on making sure that we maintain those high standards and level of academics. But then here's our focus for our STEM school. We have some generous grants. We've gotten over $35,000 worth of grants again this year. And these grants are what allow us to really have those quality experiences and be able to support that authentic learning, those community immersions, and then a lot of our fabrication things that we do as well. Looking at our community immersions, you can see that we have steadily increased. Last year, we had 95. I don't know how many we'll have at this point this year because we're still early in the year. But we are very excited about the experiences that we have had and how they target very specifically what projects the kids are doing and what they're learning so that they can apply that knowledge and work with our business partners. We have really started our year off strong with that inquiry, with the collaboration, and with those project-based learning units. As you heard, Coach Muck has been collaborating with the high school. And we have really increased that collaboration outside of just the RHTA bubble, but looking at how we can work within the whole district and then within the community as well. Okay, so this is a part that I haven't really talked about before, but I wanted to really point out. We are really working to maintain that leadership role for North Ridgeville within the STEM community and within the Ohio STEM Learning Network. And these are things that we're doing to not only maintain our skills and make sure that we're keeping current on the best practices and on new laws or regulations, but also so that we can keep that reputation and so that when people think about North Ridgeville and they're within that STEM network, they look to us as a leader. So there's a lot of different things that we're doing, mentoring other schools, having them come into site visits, presenting at conferences. But we're very proud of this. But the more important part is that it reflects well on the district and on everything that's happening here in North Ridgeville. But most importantly is our kids and making sure that our kids stay center, that they become those leaders and that they love learning and are engaged in the things that are happening at our school.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Coach Durkin for being flexible, as she pointed out. I was just a little bit last minute for her, and we appreciate her flexibility and her help tonight. Thank you. That concludes Superintendent's report.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and take a brief recess so we can get pictures of all our students and staff of the month. And again, congratulations to all of you. Some amazing kids and staff who makes us Ranger Strong and makes us Ranger proud. If you would like to come and join us, we have some more riveting stuff. Otherwise, have your pictures taken for the rest of your evening.
Always stay.
Welcome back. The room is now pretty much empty. Here's an opportunity for announcements and hearing of the public this evening. Okay, CNN. Move right into the consents agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consents agenda resolution as presented.
Second.
Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Tamira.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby. Yes. Ms. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vakken.
Yes. Finance audit report.
Yes, we have one item this evening. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the financial report and monthly financial statements for September 2023. I move to approve this finance audit item in one reading.
Second. Ms. McCarthy, second by Ms. Grigsby. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby. Yes. Ms. Saxon.
Yes.
Ms. Tamira.
Yes.
Mr. Vakken.
Yes. Education report. Ms. Tamira.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the supervised overnight field trip for North Ridgeville High School cheerleading team to travel to Delaware, Ohio for the UCA-Ohio Regional Competition. This trip is set for October 28th through 29th of 2023. I move to approve the education item in one reading.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. Saxon. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Tamira.
Yes.
Ms. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vakken.
Yes. Human Resources report. Ms. Saxon.
Yes, we have a few items to consider under the Human Resources report. One certified staff replacement, five support staff appointments, two hourly tutor contracts, one NREA supplemental contract, one support staff substitute. One support staff substitute contract. Three unpaid volunteer recognitions. One support staff contract adjustment. Two certified staff leaves of absence. One support staff leave of absence. Two support staff resignations. I move to approve the Human Resources items in one reading.
Second.
Second by Ms. Saxon, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to ask Mr. Yonker how this, I couple bus drivers that we're adding to our staff, which is very exciting.
Today, we got our first email in the afternoon that there were no delays and no changes, so it's a wonder.
Very good. So I'm sure we still need plenty more bus drivers, or are all of our positions filled?
No, we can take more. I think today was the right step, and Tammy and Tim and their teams have done awesome to put those puzzle pieces together. And today, they all did come together, even if only for a day while we're still trying to fill some loopholes that are out there. But it's a step in the right direction.
Right, perfect. And while we're discussing that, Tammy, and just and Tim, thank you for the hard work that you put into this. I mean, how many years has it been that we've been behind in bus drivers and trying to catch up with bus drivers and routes? And then this year, adding the extra distance to our routes and trying to reconfigure all that. It's a lot of hard work, and I don't think people understand how much energy and effort goes into that to make sure that we are busing as many kids as possible. And I know that you both do a tremendous amount of work, and I know the rest of the board is appreciative, too. So thank you.
Let's take a roll before they change their minds, so.
All right, Ms. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira.
Yes.
And Mr. Vaca.
Yes. Great. Well, before we adjourn this meeting, just a reminder, early voting has started. I actually received my absentee ballot in the mail already, and it's been filled out and dropped off, so every vote counts. I think we learned that in May, so please vote, vote early. Make sure your voice is heard. Am I allowed to say that, right?
Yes.
Say it again.
It is recommended to the Board of Education to adjourn this regular meeting.
Second.
Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Tamira.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
Six thirty-nine.
Thank you, everybody.